Yeah, it's not that big of a deal.
What is this? I didn't ask Dan, what is this for? Is this somebody's prison?
No. Let me check. Cindy Arnold sent me an email. Just double check. Fire. Isn't that more money than we were gonna spend? Oh, no, not more than five hundred thousand. It's fire. Our bond. (cough)
Our Father in Heaven, we are thankful to be here to discuss county business and concerns of the citizens of the county. And ask that the influence of thy Spirit can be upon the commissioners as they make decisions. And we are so thankful to be able to to live in this great country and thankful especially to live in this community. And ask us each to be inspired to be stewards of our domains here in this county in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll second that. So it's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We will go to our departmental reports. We'd like to excuse our county attorney Chad Dodson. He couldn't make it this morning. And I don't see our Children's Justice Center here, so we'll move to Lori Heichelberger, Justice Court.
This is gonna be short and sweet since I think I was here just under a month ago because of a makeup session. So we did get our new hire. So I'll start with the staffing. So we're fully staffed between that makes seven clerks, myself is aide, is the administrator, and the presiding and part-time judge. From a budgetary standpoint, I think that's the first sheet there. You'll see that we are on budget. I did highlight something there, but that's gonna be a sidebar conversation with everybody. Real quickly, I'll just say that after our budget meeting, I have requested a report from Corus, from their court data requests to try to determine the, and I, revenues are a touchy subject for the Justice Court, but we do have some big things coming potentially down the road. So I've asked them for a report that shows revenues generated from misdemeanor Bs and Cs. The one thing that I would note as they do pull that report, it will include some infractions because when cases, you know, when citations are written, you could have misdemeanor Bs and Cs along with infractions. So down the road, that would be something that if one of those other alternatives is approved, those cases, including those infractions, you know, would be impacted. So I think it'll be interesting first to see that. And I was hoping to have it by today, not that this would have been the appropriate format, but I would have loved to have just been able to show you, you know, what that's gonna potentially look like.
So that will go away with the new?
If, yeah, and from what I understand, I mean, you're, you know, it's probably to the twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three legislative session. And even then, I don't think from, you know, and again, I'm very inexperienced at this, but I would say that it's something that's even maybe further down the road in terms of, you know, the change of, you know.
They'll just, they'll just talk about it and work through it, but it won't probably come.
From what I'm understanding, not, not for a couple of years. But it's, but I, but I, I'm a prepared person, so I wanna know. And I'd like to know for everybody what that's potentially gonna look like. So I can really quickly, since I did kinda bypass to show you the, there's something I was gonna speak to, but I'll go out of order since we talked about that and just have you look at the recap. So what I did was when I was here a month ago, I ran everything through the second quarter since that would have been what we would have discussed in August, and this is through the third quarter. Basically, I would say that we're just pretty flat in terms of citations from the major categories. We're probably off about seven hundred citations written in comparison to the year before. So I would say that's pretty flat. And in terms of, you know, the revenue that's collected, you know, ten thousand more than the year before, the revenue that was dispersed, nineteen thousand more than the year before, and then what was retained was close to nine thousand less than the year before. And then again, I just kinda went out of order and talked about that other, that other concern. I did include just the citation comparisons and they're from two thousand fourteen forward. I have to say, and I know Chief Carpenter's here, we've probably got, we all know the impact that we're having, having Wade Lee back on the road. So the Iron County citations are up considerably over what they were even just the year before. And you can see that, I've got that outlined on that comparison report. The only other thing really to discuss was which I think is noteworthy is when I was here last time, we talked about the small claims system, the ODR. And I think what the state is doing, the AOC, is creating ways that are a lot more friendly to the pro se type defendant. So there's the ODR, which, and Commissioner Wood and I were discussing earlier, how we've got about six cases filed there. And, and I think that it's really nice for the pro se defendant who doesn't have legal representation. Because even if they, if there's someone with an attorney present for them in this facilitation process, in this system, they still have to go through the system and they still have to have a facilitator try to help them work that out. And I think that's beneficial to somebody who's, who's not well-versed in the law, so. But the other new system that's coming, and we're gonna train on it a little bit this week, is called JAQ. It's J-A-Q, and the application is called My Case. So the pro se defendant in a criminal matter will have the ability to now do their own e-filing, much like attorneys are required in the state to do e-filing through a system. We don't accept filings via email or fax or, or at the window anymore for attorneys. And, and this is just a first-phase rollout, so we will still be doing all of those things. But there will be a system in which a pro se defendant now will have the ability to go in and do e-filing. And that's gonna still maintain a workload for the court because we're gonna have to go in and make sure that they're filing correctly and filing the right documents correctly. And we'll reject those if they're not good and, you know, kind of explain what needs to be changed and wait for the filing to come back. So that's something that we're gonna be training on this week, and I think it's, I think it's a nice thing for the pro se defendant. And I don't have a lot other because I think I was just here a month ago, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
So high patrol numbers are, seem to be way down?
Way up. Oh, no, no, down. You're, you're right. I'm sorry, I was back on the county. And I can't speak to that.
Is part of that maybe because we gave part of this section to pair one? Or is that, that didn't seem like that was that much?
I don't think so. I'm wondering if it isn't the fact, and that's something that maybe would be a good question for Chief Richards, Riches, Randy Riches. Maybe it has something to do with, with COVID, you know, in terms of them being careful on the road. I don't know. You know, because we just process what comes through. I just, I always just think it's interesting to, you know, to see. And I'm, yeah, if you, if you wanted me to ask, I could certainly ask, but.
Just way down.
You know.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tori, appreciate you. Let's see, we'll go back to Children's Justice Center, Stephanie.
Thank you, madam.
Hey, good morning. Okay, this just kinda breaks down our cases over the last three years, just so you can have kind of a good look, kind of to see, you know, where cases are coming in at. And as you can tell, this year, we're pretty close already to being at the same caseload that we were for all of last year. And, and we account for some of last year's, not as many cases due to COVID because so many of our referents come from the school. And when kids weren't going to school for quite a while, it made quite, quite a big effect to the Children's Justice Center. It's also got into Beaver County as well, Kane County, and Garfield County. We're actually pretty surprised at Garfield County's numbers, but we've already had eleven for the year. Considering prior to a CJC being in Garfield County, we only saw like maybe one or two. That's about it. So we're, it's, it's, we've always kind of ran off the notion throughout the entire state that unfortunately, it's the, you build it and they will come. And I think that the community just gets super comfortable knowing that there's a voice there for kids, that there's a place there to advocate for families and a place where their children can receive mental health care, a medical exam, and just kinda really help those families, you know, through that healing process through the court system. And so we're very happy that they are using the Children's Justice Centers in all four counties very well. If you go down below, you look at medical exams, of course, all of our medical exams are screened by our nurse practitioner and our nurse. So every case that comes through the Children's Justice Center, we forward that information to our nurse and our nurse practitioner. They screen it and then they decide who they feel should, you know, come in for exams. Because not all, all, all cases, you know, warrant a medical exam that's needed, so. But what's really nice is having that medical exam in place for kiddos just really helps the kids walk away knowing that their body's okay, that they're okay, and, you know, they're gonna, they're healthy and they can, you know, continue to grow and learn and, and not have that weight on their shoulders on, on wondering if there's anything wrong with them or not. And then if you go down below, you'll see the therapy in regards to in schools. There was a change this year. One of our therapists was at the Canyon View Middle School. She's now been moved over to Parowan, so she's covering all of Parowan now. And that's only because the school district had moved one of their therapists from Cedar Middle School over to Canyon View Middle School. And then they were able to obtain funding to hire their own therapist as well. And so we still have Tori and Natalie, and we're actually going to be looking at contracting with some additional therapists who are not in schools as well. So that way our kiddos aren't ever having to wait and they're able to be seen right away. Any questions in regards to our statistics?
On the therapists, last time you came, you said that you were having hard time getting those contracted?
We are, because unfortunately, I mean, one, there's, therapists have like months waiting lists. So it's not like they are looking for business. They have plenty of business. And unfortunately, with our federal contracts, we're only able to pay them at eighty dollars an hour, which, you know, that seems like that's quite a bit, but in private practice, I mean, they can charge upwards of a hundred and forty dollars an hour. And so we're kinda competing with that as well. You know, the nice thing is, at least with ours, is they don't have to deal with insurance or anything like that. They just completely bill us and then we pay them. And so luckily, we just recently started actually contracting with a therapist that's in Ephraim, who'll be able to handle some of our Garfield County cases as well.
So we talked about that after you left, I believe, the last time that you was here. And, and, you know, there's, there's a lot of people that have moved into our community that, that may be therapists from other areas, California or wherever. And, and we wondered about advertising that they could come in as a part-time person. And we wondered if maybe, you know, sometimes after you retire and you think, hell, I'm kinda bored, you know?
Right.
I mean, I've done this, you know, several times.
Exactly, and that was, that's something that we plan on doing as well. Luckily, we are linked in with, our, our mental health providers in the area actually are part of an association that's here. And we're part of that email chain. And so like anytime we have any openings or we're providing, because the Children's Justice Center also helps provide a lot of free trainings for mental health providers in all of Iron County, not just ones that contract with us. Because we kinda feel like, pretty much all therapists, yeah, all therapists in our community are providing services to our kiddos. And so I really try to get that information out there to help any of them.
They're so logged up.
Yeah.
Could, could they bring some more part-time retiree-type people?
That would be nice.
And their whole, I, I just wondered if maybe we, you could talk to Jennifer and maybe we could advertise for something like that, you know, through the county.
No, I think that would be a great idea, since we just got that Cambria grant in place and we're good to go on that. So I will definitely talk to Jennifer and see if there's any way that we can get that.
You know, we might as well utilize these three.
I know, I'm like, I have the funding, who, you know? And I've contacted like the school district to make them aware as well because we are not just tied to only seeing kids that come through the Children's Justice Center. Luckily, with my VOKA grant and the Cambria Foundation grant, it's any kids who are experiencing any type of trauma. And that can be.
In the school and that type of thing.
That could be like, you know, divorce, you know, that's happening. Perhaps they have a family member that is, is a substance abuse user, or it could be bullying.
Passed away that they're having struggles with.
Yeah, so we really, there's, what's nice about those two grants is they're, they're really open. And so, because trauma can look a lot of different ways to a lot of different people. And so, but I'll talk to Jennifer about that and see if she can help me kinda.
I think that's great, yeah, we, you know.
And if you know any kids going into college, I tell them, I'm always like, if you're curious, mental health, mental health, mental health. I'm like, that, we really.
Great field to get into.
It really is. We've got a few of our actual officers that we've worked with for a long time who are going to be retiring soon, and quite a few of them are looking into going into the, the mental health field, so, so, yeah.
Good.
So that's that. The next huge event that we have coming, we've got a couple of events coming up. We weren't able to do our Kane County kinda grand opening. We were able to get a community development block grant, build a brand-new facility for Kane County. And it was finished like right in the midst of COVID. And so we weren't really able to do like a big grand opening or anything like that for them. So we now have that on the books for the eighth of November. It's a Monday. It's at noon. It's in Kane County. And so I, I know I forward all the information to you commissioners in regards to that. And so we'd love to see if you could come out and join us for that. We're super excited to show off this beautiful building.
We have commission meeting that day.
Oh, that's, okay. Yep, it's on the eighth at noon. And then the next event is the very next day here in Cedar, Dancing with the Stars. And this is our annual event. We didn't get to have it last year due to COVID, but this year we're super excited. And once again, Scott Phillips is going to be directing it. And this year we went with When You Wish Upon a Star, you know, a whole kinda Disney theme. We have Tyler Melling, Aaron Brown, Alex Meisner, Tyson Williams, Heather Roundy, Beth Stephenson, and Terry Sanders are going to be our community dancers. And so they all have tickets that they're selling to the community, come to the event. I have heard through the grapevine that they are absolutely just killing it this year in regards to sponsorships and bringing in quite a bit of funding. And our judges this year are Betsy Sartini, and I know I'm gonna just chop up her ring ant's last name, I believe it's Rhyme Shushel, Rhyme Shushel? She's with Canyon Creek Women's Crisis Center. And then Scott Burns, of course. And so that is on the ninth of November. It's from seven to nine. It's at the Heritage Center. Tickets are fifteen dollars each, or a family of four for fifty. And I'll leave this poster here with you guys. But we pretty much sell out every single year. We're encouraging, you know, anyone to dress up, you know, we've got, we had a gentleman who stopped by the CJC last year. And that's kinda what, that made us kinda think about this theme. And he probably dropped off about eighty princess dresses. Like he just walked in with just like all these princess dresses. And he said, I didn't know who else to take these to, but, and I wasn't sure where he had gotten them from. But he said, I, you know, you guys can have them, give them out, do whatever you want. And so we thought it'll be super fun, that we'll just have these hanging up at the event. And so like any little girls or boys or whoever wants to come and put on a princess dress, they are more than welcome to and they can take it home with them, so.
That's a great bunch of people.
So, yeah.
That is a great bunch of people.
So they are having so much fun and we're, we have been working with Ignite Dance Company, and they have been the ones that have been working with all of our community members. And so come out, support them. They really deserve it for taking so much time out of their busy day.
Besides putting themselves out there in front of everyone.
Absolutely. So I'm gonna leave this with you guys.
Okay.
What time does that start, Stephanie?
Seven to nine.
And it's always super fun. It's such a great time, and the community really missed it last year. And so we're excited that we're able to do it this year. Other than that, I think that's our next big event. And after that, we'll be rolling into our fun run, which will be in May before we know it, so.
Great work, awesome.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, have a good one.
You too. All right, Victim Advocate, three.
Morning. I feel like I was just here too. I don't know why. I'm like, time just flies, I guess, maybe? So last quarter, we, just a little bit of our statistics, we had two hundred and seventy-six clients. And fifty-eight of those were adult physical assault. Twenty-four were from adult sexual assault. Thirty-seven of them were child abuse or neglect, and thirty-eight of them were child sexual abuse or assault. And then forty-eight of them were domestic violence victims. So those are our like VOKA eligible people, all the ones that we serve for that. And then we were able to serve eleven individuals with the Compassion Services Funds that we have. So those few hours that Sheriff Carpenter was able to set aside for us to serve people who are not VOKA qualifying. um Sheriff Carpenter was able to set aside for us to serve people who are not Voca qualifying. Um and for those, they were victims of suicide, so eight of them. Um we had a lot of suicides the past quarter in the county, unfortunately. So eight of them were um family members of individuals who died by suicide. Um one was from a fatal accident and one was an attended death, so I believe that was somebody who had found their loved one. Um and we were able to provide some services for that. Um some of the things that we've done in the past month, Wendy and Jaden were pretty, I gave you guys some letters from Chief Adams for the big incidences that we've had. We had an officer involved shooting, and with that, Jaden was able to respond to the scene and assist the um the gentleman involved in that. Um he then helped him to find a hotel afterwards. Um we used Voca funds to pay for his hotel, which was helpful for him. And checked on his dog, which is something that not a lot of people think about, but if your dog's locked in the house and that house is now a crime scene, like finding somewhere for the dog is important, right? Um Wendy was also involved in a pretty big incident that occurred a couple of weeks ago. Um she was able to respond to the scene and help assist the mother in that case. Um that one was kind of a, we didn't know if it was Voca tied. So we, whenever we have some, like a situation that's not necessarily a crime against a person.
So explain how the difference is those.
Okay, so so Voca is victims of crime, so any, anytime there's a crime that's against a person, um that's our Voca. Yeah, that's our Voca funds. So if there's not, like, if it's not like a crime, like this incident was um a lady who was having some mental health issues. Um and SWAT ended up being called for that and stuff. But when Wendy first responded, it was kind of a, like, we don't know that mom was actually a victim. Like there wasn't a ton that we could go off to qualify her under Voca, which is why it's awesome that we have these extra hours to be able to help people, even if it's not a crime. Um because mom was still traumatized and having to deal with all that, right? Um but we were able to tie it to a crime. There were some threats made, so. Um that's helpful because it opens up like what we can do for her and the resources that we have and the funding that we have. So as much as it sucks to have, have a crime happen, it's helpful for us because then we're able to provide more assistance. Um but so Wendy was super instrumental in that. And it's nice that I I say nice, and I'm like, this is horrible, but it's, because it's bad that we're getting called out, but it's also good that we're getting called out because um the sooner we can help victims, the better it is, the sooner we're able to help them to access resources and support them through the whole process. Um Wendy was able to help the lady to get a hotel room and get her stuff moved from the vehicle that was being used over to the hotel room, which is why it's awesome that we have a truck, because she was able to transport all of it. Um so there's been more that we've been called out to recently. Um which is good and bad, you know. Good that we're able to help them, but bad that there's a lot going on that we're having to respond to. Um this month is Domestic Violence Month, and so we've been help participating in some different events. I was on a domestic violence panel this last week, and then we participated in Canyon Creeks um Gala, which was pretty awesome. Sheriff Carpenter was there also, as well as Lieutenant Shaver. Um that was a good time, and it helped to raise money for Canyon Creek. They do awesome stuff. Um and then just things that we have coming up, there's the courts opening more, so we have a lot of trials coming up and things that are gonna be um taking our time in that aspect.
So do you, you would testify on certain things or?
No, so we're, we have, like, we can, we can be called. Um but we usually, like, we never have because of confidentiality rules, like technically under this House bill, like, we can be, but um we never have. And I know Jessica's been at the county attorney's office. She's been called to testify before, and the county attorneys have been awesome about like sidelining that, I guess, and making it so that she doesn't have to, because it's hard for a victim. You know, yeah, confidentiality, we know a lot usually. Um but we try and support victims. So Jessica usually will take over a lot of stuff once a case hits the court system. Um but since we are still a support for victims, we'll go to court with them and try and help them through that, because even though even though they may get some closure through the court process, it's still super hard. And then they have the aftermath of the court process to, to deal with, so.
All back up.
Yes, yeah. So we just try and create like a whole team and we have a case coming up with a, with a juvenile victim. And so that one's gonna be hard, and we're just gonna try and get as many people as we can to kind of go and support her in the case.
Good.
But, yep, that's all I had. Do you guys have any questions for me?
No, I just want to thank you. Um I know Mike always tells us how wonderful the victims advocates are, because otherwise law enforcement has to deal it on, with it on their own. And they're really, I mean, they have probably some training, but it's really hard for them. It's, you know, you guys are, that's what you do. And so, and so we're really thankful for you guys.
Yeah, that's our whole goal, is to, you know, try and relieve some stress from officers. But also, we, I was I think it was on the Domestic Violence Panel, I was talking about this, like the difference between officers and us is like, we just see things through a different lens. So something that they, they're focused on the case and, you know, investigating and making sure that the bad guy's stopped and all that. Yeah, yeah, which is what they should be focused on. They shouldn't have to focus on like taking care of a guy's dog or where they're gonna sleep tonight or stuff like that. So we're really, we're glad that we're able to, to help with that, so.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you.
All right, looks like we're down to Commission Reports. Commissioner Wood.
Okay. Um not this last week, but the week before, we, um Paul and I was able to go up to WIR, the Western Interstate Regional Conference, which people from all over the United States came to. Um that's um uh the NACO, which is um the counties. Um and we was able to go on a trip on Tuesday out to the basin, uh to Uena County and Duchaine County. And it was, it was really neat to see the other counties and what they're doing. Um they, they have a lot of gas and oil out there that, that um basin has a lot of resources of that type of thing. Um and to see what the monies that, that they um are able to generate, the tax monies that they get from those oil and gas leases that comes back to the county. And they've been so fortunate. They have these beautiful buildings, uh horse arenas, um you know, uh conference centers um that they've been able to use. The, the one thing that I really got out of, out of that tour though was they have no infrastructure. And, and you don't think about that, but, but they have a hard time moving their oil uh out because they don't have rail, they don't have a freeway, they don't have airport, you know, a big enough airport. Those infrastructures that, that we take for granted here in Iron County that we have is the reason why we are looked at right now for the inland port. And, and how exciting that is for us, because we have that infrastructure into place. We actually have the railroad that comes right into our area. Um that spur, the Cedar City spur that comes in, that makes it so that you know, we're gonna be able to utilize that for that infrastructure, for that, for the inland port. Um we also networked with a lot of the other county commissioners, and that's always fun to get to know them better and um they, you know, we had, went to a lot of different classes. We went on another trip that was in Summit County. And uh they showed a fire that uh they had going up uh Parley's Canyon that there's uh several subdivisions up there. And they could not get those people to, to do the mitigation work, to, to save their homes. And after that fire came up and they were all evacuated, now they're ready to do the mitigation work. Sometimes it takes a scare like that for us to wake up and realize, you know, the, the thing that we need to do for that. Um anyway, we, uh we quite enjoyed that, that conference and uh
I will say, um we're fortunate in Iron County, uh we have a couple of communities like that, but Cedar Highlands is really kind of taking that under their, I mean, they, they've really done a lot of fire
Yes, yes.
Through there.
And, and, and they should be, because that is a huge problem. But yeah, Cedar Highland, definitely. We need to do more too. But, but they have done a lot of work and, and that's important, I think.
They say there's ninety-nine hundred homes there that could have been burned up.
That could have been burned up. There was one box canyon that there was nowhere for it to go. It, it would have went right up that, that canyon and then gone over the top into the next subdivision, so, yeah, it and, and then we went up further in Summit Canyon, uh Canyon and, and uh above Park City there. And it was interesting, when we got way high up in there, um they have three different watersheds from up there, and they are in the same boat as we are with the Beetle Kill. So, you know, their, their uh watershed is so important, and it goes three different ways, I believe, they said. Uh different, two different basins. And, and so, you know, they're, they're wanting to do that work, but, you know, as we all know, our federal partners sometimes have a hard time getting that work done. And so it was, it was pretty disheartening the same as ours sometimes, but I had one more thing. Um there's a public hearing uh at the uh Perwin City Offices at five o'clock on Thursday, the twenty-eighth um this Thursday, to discuss the transfer of the um fairgrounds from Perwin City to the county. Um we've been in some little discussions back and forth with this for a little while. I just wanna point out, you know, if you, if you have a concern or, or have questions about it, to come to that. And, and a lot of that information will come out. I just wanna um thank Perwin City Council and their mayor for, for standing up. It's, it's hard to be an elected official. And we've been in budget meetings this last couple of weeks. There's so much that, that a elected official has to balance. Um and, and you, you wanna give everything to everybody, but, but the, the funds aren't there. And in a small town like Perwin, you know, they lost their swimming pool and the residents want a new swimming pool. So in that balancing act, to try to, to be able to you know, get a new swimming pool, that's the reason why they figured, you know, to talk to the county, you know, we're, we're, have been putting money into it. It's kind of a different um scenario with the city owning the property and the county having the county fair there. Usually the county owns theirs. I don't know of any other place that the county doesn't own their county fairgrounds. And so it's been a little bit odd uh relationship, because you know, we don't wanna step on their toes and they don't wanna step on our toes, and they need the help, but you know, how do we justify to our constituents that we're putting money into, you know, the fairgrounds that, that, you know, we don't really even own, you know? So it's, it, it's a discussion that probably is needed to be had. And uh, you know, anyway, the, the public hearing will be, and then we'll also have one here at the county too, uh and, and we'll see how, you know, when we can schedule that, so that we can also have one here.
Right, thank you. Could, could I just say, un- that unequivocally, there is no move afoot, desire anything to move the location of the county fair. There was a lot said on social media about that.
And we cannot move the fairgrounds, and there's nowhere else to have it. Cedar City isn't big enough. They don't have a facility that's big enough. The county's put a lot of money into that and
Well, over the years, in this commission particularly, I mean, new buildings, new, new, new pads, new bleachers, a lot of investment there. And, and, and I think, I, I, I think it's gonna be very positive um for the county, but also for the town. My conversations with uh the Cleed Matheson at the city, you know, he, he's, he's excited at the prospect of it. So, I mean, hopefully the meeting on Thursday goes well.
Yeah.
You know, and here.
The county has, has more resources, and, and it would be really nice to be able to fix it up, you know? Put, put, put a little gleam on it, you know? It, it really is a gem, you know, the, the Perwin. And, and, and it has so much potential, so much potential, so.
Yep, and get some more use out of it, possibly capture some revenue from events or, you know, family reunions or whatever.
Will help Perwin because of their businesses. It'll bring business into their, their town.
John took the words out of my mouth.
Sorry.
Oh, you're good. I just, I appreciate you saying that, because we've never, it's never crossed our mind to move the fair to Cedar City or wherever. We just have never thought about that. In fact, our family, when we met with the Perwin City Council, I I told them, I assured them that our family loves to come to Perwin. It's fun to come to a smaller town and experience this atmosphere over here, the mother town of Iron County and and uh as John said, we're putting a lot of, and Maryland, we're putting a lot of money in the fairgrounds. In fact, Carter Enterprises are starting the concrete work for the base for the new bleachers, where we raised the old ones. Um there's never been anything nefarious about this. In fact, this has been talked about for years. I mean, this, this, this idea was brought up back ten, fifteen years ago. It's been talked about a lot. So it's nothing new, but it's, something's finally moving forward. It's not something we've gone out and pursued. It's been, it's, it's been uh something that but we're excited when we saw the prospect. We're excited to participate if that's what Perwin City votes to do, so. Um just a couple of quick things that I have. Um I drove down to Canarville Saturday night. Excuse me, we're, we're still working on flooding issues around the county as far as uh preventative maintenance. Um we had some situations down in, on the north end of Canarville. We've got a dis- detention basin there that we're, we had it cleaned out quite a bit with these last floods. It filled it back in again. It's just it's, it's an ongoing process, never ending. Um but uh just, just south, I, actually, it was a south end of Canarville. I, I said north, but a south. On the north end of Canarville, by uh Coronado's property, uh Curtis DeMill, I went down and looked at that, um when I went down to meet with his homeowner, but he's done a beautiful job fixing that where it breached the road and and the, and the, and the thing there. But um Curtis DeMill is, he works under the direction of our Iron County Engineer. And um he does a wonderful job go- uh going around the county with a excavator and, and uh doing preventive maintenance on the flood channels that we have. So we continue to work on that. Um mentioned the fairgrounds pad, um that's moving along, exciting to get that going. Um Commissioner Wood and, and Blake and, and I attended a um groundbreaking this week for, this last week for the uh Four Points Health Center. The, the Paiute Tribe is building a brand-new medical facility. It's gonna be a one-stop shop for dental, medical, all of those things, uh not only for their uh folks there, but also for the community at large. And that's, that's an exciting project that they've got coming up. And um Commissioner Wood explained the uh WIR conference well. I, I enjoy that too. You know, these watersheds you look at above Camas that they took us up. Um you know, when you look at those watersheds up there in that, in those counties, um I think, then they say that provides water for two and a half million people. And so when you, it's so important that um
We take care of those.
Exactly. The shared stewardship with the Forest Service and other partners, it's so critical that we do preventive maintenance and, and reduce fuel loads. If you have some mega fires in those areas, it can, it can really have a negative effect on these watersheds. And it's, it's so critical with those things.
They, they talked about, there was quite a few people there from California. And, and it came up about the, the fit, fog, the fire uh smoke that we've had to endure this summer. And, and they, they discussed that, you know, they need to take care of their forests. They haven't taken care of their forests, and then we have these catastrophic wildfires. And we end up burning the, the cost of that by, by our bad air quality. And, and it's not fair. I mean, it, you know, they kind of beat up on a little bit about it, because, you know.
But that's uh, that's all I have for a report. Um John, you have anything else or?
Uh just would like to report ballots went in the mail Thursday. They were delayed a bit. We're still legally in the window, but uh uh we are, we had consternation just because it, we'd like to have them out as soon as we can get them out, and that didn't happen this time.
You think we'll see them maybe today?
I, I think some people will see them as early as day, as today. I know often in Cedar, Jeannie gets hers before I get mine. I bet mine come tomorrow. Hopefully hers comes today.
Okay, very good. All right, with that, we will uh adjourn this meeting until ten o'clock, so we'll take about a fifteen-minute break and uh convene back then. Thank you. Thank you.
Ready to go? Ready, John?
Yep.
Welcome back to our Iron County Commission meeting. And you know, we, we mentioned in our last meeting, but we'd like to excuse Commissioner Blake. He had some responsibilities with his assignment with the Chamber of Commerce. So he's out of town today. Wish him safe travels. We will go to agenda, agenda item number one, our public comments section. This is a three minute opportunity for those to make comments. Should not repeat others' comments only for items not on the agenda. No items related to commissioners roles and appeal board comments should be directed to the commission. No tax on other people's character. So anybody like to take a minute?
Oh, it's my height, great. I usually have to just all the way down. My name is Cassie Easley. I live in Enoch. I've lived in Iron County since two thousand and three, so this is our town. I was told that I was going to be on the agenda today, which is why I'm here and I'm not, obviously. So this past Thursday, when Sheriff Carpenter called me, he did not inform me that I was not on the agenda.
Just for everyone's sake, could you tell us what you're talking about?
Oh, I'm sorry. I submitted an ordinance for a Second Amendment preservation to this commission. And I was told that today would be the day that I would come and be able to talk to you about that. So when he called me on Thursday, he didn't inform me that it was not on the agenda. So I was unaware of that. So I was here to speak about that, but obviously I won't go into why the ordinance. I just do have a question that relates to it. He said that the timing's not right. So the time's not right. We needed to do it as an entire state. When I spoke to him six months ago, he told me the same thing, that the timing was not right at that time. We needed to wait at that time because Senator Vickers was going to take it to the state, hoping to pass a sanctuary bill for the entire state. And I was like, okay, I'll wait. We'll see what happens. They didn't do that. So when is going to be the right time for this to be heard by the commission? We need to, I mean, we, we as a community of people that look to you as our representatives to represent what we want as a community, are trying to have you guys hear something and make a decision on something that the people in the community would really like to have go forward. But we just keep getting told it's not the right time. How do we know when the right time is going to be for you guys to hear this so that we can know when to submit it? So that we can actually be on the agenda? So that's my question. We're kind of disappointed that I didn't know until I talked to John at the break. It was like, I thought I was on the agenda. He wasn't concise and clear when he was, was telling me that. So that's why I ended up being here today.
I don't know. Can we talk to that? We, we pulled it from the agenda. Usually when you bring in ordinance, you talk to all the commissioners to begin with. We took it to legal. We felt like that he needed to be involved in that.
Right.
But we've been talking about it for a long time. In fact, when I ran, I was on the same assumption that we need to push that forward. After talking to the sheriff, and he is very involved with the State Sheriff Association, and, and it really makes sense what he has, has, has suggested to us. And that's the reason why we, and we don't know when the right time is. Because until something is done to, to go against the Constitution and the Second Amendment, until something comes down and bonks us on the head, we feel like we need to wait because it's going to make a bigger impact when, when something like that happens and twenty-nine counties go together and do it all in each county and do it all at once. Then, then the impact of it will probably be, be national at that point. Where right now, if we pass that today, no one would even hear about it. Other than, than maybe, you know, the-
Bill of Iron County?
Yeah, yeah. And that's, and that's right. But what impact does it really make in the state?
There are fifteen other counties that are getting these same things, this exact same ordinance on the agenda by the end of the year.
The sheriff talks to the, to the other sheriffs and they, and, and they have the same feeling that they want to do it all at once because they feel like that it's more powerful. If, if we get to a point where, and, and you know, it doesn't prevent him from, from, I mean, we've all taken the oath to uphold the Constitution. So the Second Amendment is on that, right?
Yes.
They passed a resolution in thirteen, was it?
Well, yeah, we passed one years ago when I was on the city council. We passed one, yeah, I think it was two thousand, the county and Cedar City both passed a resolution.
Passed resolution.
We just barely passed one in Iron County not long ago, so.
The one that makes a council? Is that the one you're talking about, the one in April? That makes a council to look to see if you guys feel unconstitutional?
Exactly. We felt like that that, that that had enough teeth for right now. Down the road, we're, we would definitely, I mean, if it, if it was something that came down the pipe that really took our constitutional rights away, we would pass something immediately. I can, I can tell you that.
Sam, would you like to speak to that a little bit? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, let's.
Sheriff County Carpenter, just if I can approach that. I had no idea whether it was on the agenda or not on the agenda when I spoke with you. Cause I don't have anything to do with the agenda.
Well, and I have to apologize. I, I made the assumption, I had a busy Friday and I made the assumption that you had been talked to and I should have reached out to you. So that's, that's on me. I apologize.
But I, I want you to understand and the community to understand that myself and everybody else that is, is here stands in firm support of the Second Amendment of the Constitution and all amendments of the Constitution. We're here to, to protect those rights. And you know, we, we take those things very, very seriously. But as Commissioner Woods has spoken, you know, I'd meet with the Sheriff's Association on nearly a monthly basis. We're meeting again on this Thursday. I'll be happy to talk to the sheriffs again this Thursday. It's actually on Friday and see where their counties are at. But as Commissioner Woods has already indicated, you know, we, we have, as, as counties, we have very few weapons, if you will, to fight against the federal government. And one of the strongest things that we have is unification. So when we do something like a Second Amendment ordinance as individual counties, if we do it as an individual county, it has very, very little impact. It has probably no media notice at all. As you look around today, we don't have anyone here representing the media. So- Not, not in of itself, but what does make a statement is if twenty-nine counties, even if the state itself isn't willing to pass a Second Amendment ordinance, if twenty-nine counties unify together and pass an ordinance for each of those counties at the same time, then that's a very strong political statement. It's a very strong political statement to our state representatives and it's a very strong political statement to our national representatives. So to me, this isn't about the ordinance of whether the ordinance is a good thing or a bad thing. This is about having unification to be able to make a very strong political statement when we need it. And that's, that's what we want to wait for is when is it going to be of the greatest advantage for the people of our county and the people of the state of Utah? That's, that's why we've been holding off, not because we don't support it. I, I don't know if you fully understand what I was trying to talk with you the other day or not. So I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you. All right. We'll go to agenda item number two, discussing a donation for the Senior Companion and Foster Grandparent Program. Joanie? Welcome, Joanie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So my name's Joanie Lyman. I come every year. Now, are you, you're pretty new.
I'm new.
Brand spanking new. Good. So I'll just tell you a little bit about my programs. So I work for Five County Association of Governments. Our programs are actually a national program, so they're all over America. And, but you have to have a sponsor. So Five County is our sponsor, which they do a great job. I like, I like them. So our, the name of our program, the overall name is AmeriCorps Seniors. They just recently changed that from Corporation for National Community Service. So I like AmeriCorps Seniors much better, better description. So I have two programs. I have Senior Companions. So Senior Companions go to the homes of other seniors. They take them shopping, to doctor's appointments, just go visit any kind of needed errands. Foster Grandparents is my other program and they go to the schools and help the kids with their reading. So the programs were designed, they've been around about fifty-five and sixty years ago. Sixty years for Foster Grandparents, fifty-five for Senior Companions. So they've been around a long time, but they were actually designed for low income seniors to earn a little extra money. So I pay my foster grandparents and senior companions a whopping three dollars an hour. So, but it really does help. It doesn't count against their social security. It doesn't count if they're on heat assistance or any kind of other programs. But it does help our low income seniors be able to serve. But because we all know it costs a little bit to serve, it costs a little bit for those new shoes or whatever you need to, to get out and about. So they're all lower income seniors and they have to serve at least fifteen hours a week. So that's a pretty substantial. Most of mine serve about twenty, around twenty hours a week. So to keep my program, I have to come up with some match money. And so I asked the cities and counties that I have volunteers in to do a little match. And it just shows community support, which grants like to see that we have community support. So that's why I asked for a little donation. Just to update you on, so we were kind of down for a minute for COVID from about March to May for our senior companions. After that, they got back to work. They couldn't take their clients places, but they could go shop for them and, and do things for them. Foster Grandparents in Washington County were shut down. The schools wouldn't let them in, but Iron County was great. Thank you. They let our volunteers in the schools. And I just, I just find it very interesting that I didn't lose any foster grandparents in Iron County for that whole year. But I am down to like four foster grandparents in Iron County. I lost about seven. So they just don't stick around if they don't have a purpose and things to do.
In Iron County, didn't you?
I didn't lose any. Yeah.
So it's Washington County that you lost?
Yeah, because they were working. They were doing what they love to do. And a lot of my volunteers start the program because they need a little money, but they don't stay very long if that's the reason. So they usually stay because their, their teachers can't live without them. Their clients can't live without them. What would they do? So they're great programs. I could talk about them all day. Iron County has some great volunteers. We have two senior companions right here in Parowan that are just, it's just amazing what they can do because we can provide the transportation for our seniors that they need. And there's no cost to the client. We don't charge them. It's all paid for. So they can take them into Cedar for shopping or doctors or whatever they need. So I'm just, you guys in the past have done about a thousand dollars, but I'm open for, for a little donation. Last year, we were pretty much kind of down, so we didn't ask for donations. But this year I'm back asking, so.
All right.
You have any questions? Do you?
I, I think it's a great program.
They're really good.
Well, I was just talking to my aging parents in St. George, so you don't have very many there.
I'm doing pretty good senior companion wise, but no foster grandparents. Because my senior companions work.
Because they really are in need.
Okay, my number's on there. I'm pretty sure it is.
I will call you.
Yes. Give me a call for sure.
I, I think we should support this, that you feel. Yeah. I'll move to donate to the Senior Companion and Foster Grandparent Program in the amount of a thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Second that.
Thank you.
So it's been moved in second. At all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ocean Carries.
Thank you so much.
I'll be calling you.
All right. We'll go to item number three, discussion of possible approval of an off-road race for motorcycles and UTVs. Event that will be held at Iron Springs Resort. Event date is November sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, from six AM to eight PM. And Donald?
Morning, thank you. My name's Donald Jackson from Legacy Racing. And we're hosting off-road race here on November sixth. I provided some documents and kind of start going over those. But real quick, my back history is I've been promoting off-road races for seventeen years. And this is the first year for our company.
You don't look that old.
Yeah, I, I get that.
Just saying.
I started when I was five, just so you know. So I, I have a lot of history and this is kind of my background and my roots. So we're, we consider ourselves professionals and, and we, we promised a good job for Iron Springs if this is approved and also Iron County as well. So first thing is the schedule of events. Just to go over kind of what we're going to do is Friday, all this takes place at Iron Springs Resort. And it's just to get the participants registered, make sure the vehicles are safe to participate and just give them any notes or whatnot on the event itself. The public's welcome to come out. The vehicles will be on display. So it's a good time to interact with the, the racers and any local vendors that we can get to come out to participate would be, would be awesome. And then we're going to do a little welcome party at the IG Winery just to try and again, bring some, some of these people that are coming from out of town. Cause we have people coming from Colorado, Southern California, Arizona and stuff. So bring them to Cedar City and get to experience a little bit of, of what Cedar City's all about. And obviously Iron County too, so. And then on Saturday, this is when the racing all takes place. So the bikes and quads will start at eight fifteen in the morning and the UTVs will start at twelve fifteen. The reason we separate them is there's fast dirt bike riders and fast quad riders and there's slow fast, slow dirt bike and quad riders. And then same thing in the UTVs, there's fast guys and slow guys. So for safety, we try and separate them the best we can. There may be, end up be a little overlap where the slow guys are going around and the fast guys start. But we have a lot of people out there to help direct them and jump them in different spots to get them in safely. And then on Sunday, a lot of terminology is used in the off-road industry is the desert cleanup. They go up and clean up roads and stuff, but we didn't want to follow the norm and the same thing. So we call it the spit shine. So we have partnered with Tread Lightly, which is a program that supports off-road racing and, and use of trails, but supports it in a, a way that is non-degregating to the environment. And we try and clean up after ourselves essentially. So we're going to organize volunteers and do a spit shine, clean the road from Highway fifty-six to Iron Springs, pick up any garbage and stuff. And so that's from nine to noon. Again, welcome to any volunteers that want to come from the community and participate in that, but try and give back to the communities we race in and participate in. Next, I'm going to go over our map, just to kind of show you.
So I have some of these rudimentary ones that were sent to me. Is that?
It's the same. This one's just on Google Earth and it has all of our volunteers on there. So I've provided those to you. As you can tell, most of it is on Frank's, Frank Nichols property. Ninety-five percent of the, the event is on private property. All event, private properties that we cross, we've gained permission. We have written authorizations to use their property. Settlers, Settler's one of them. We've gained their permission, went through the process. We had to get a, I think it's a state business license, which was new to us. We've never had to do that in Utah before, but we did that. And so we have just a couple of county pieces that we're seeking permission to use. And that's just to transit from basically A to B to coordinate all the little trails back and forth. And so those pieces, if we can pull up the road diagrams, I know you got one pulled up, John.
So these are what I've got.
Perfect. So yeah, we'll start with that one. So this one is at Iron Springs. So we are crossing from the south to the north, just on the east end of Iron Springs. That kind of makes sense. So we're just crossing there. What we're asking is to allow our participants to cross the road. It'll be a twenty-five mile an hour zone, but give our participants the right of way as that's not a heavily used road and stop the traffic on the roadway. One of the reasons we asked for that is our participants are on a time. So the, the fastest time wins essentially. So if we can prevent having to stop them for a car crossing and then their competitor doesn't have to stop, it just makes things a lot easier. So we'll have flag people there to, to do that.
So it shouldn't take long to cross?
No, they'll, they'll be across in five, ten seconds. Again, it's a controlled twenty-five mile an hour zone, so they're not racing across it. We'll have signs on the roadways, warning that the traffic, that there is a crossing coming up. We'll have flag people in place. So, and that'll be for, for all the crossings. So we'll go over those. So the next one would be the Shooting Range Road. I don't know what the exact terminology is, just whatever it refers to it to. That one's Comstock, John. So there should be one more, one more after that one? Okay. This one, this one came in a little later. I forgot about it and so it might not have got it to you. Basically, we're just crossing straight across the Shooting Range Road, right where the road to the solar field breaks off. And it should be page two in your guys' documents. Yeah, exactly. So essentially we're just asking to the same thing, be able to stop the people on the Shooting Range Road, let our participants cross, then we'll let them go at that location.
So it'll be just a few minutes that they'll be stopped?
If that, you know. The start of the race, it'll be a little bit bunched up. This will be the, actually the first crossing our participants come to. It'll be fifteen miles into the event. So they'll, they'll start thirty seconds apart, some will start a minute apart. So they'll be spread out a little bit, but the first lap, they'll be closer together. Second lap, they get a little more spread and it just kind of is like an accordion stretches out. So the longer the event goes, the less time that the traffic would be stopped. And then the next one is coming down to Iron Springs Road again, crossing at the railroad tracks on the Shooting Range Road. So the way the route works is we have to get on the Shooting Range Road for about a quarter mile. I looked at it on Saturday and I feel like if we can block off about three feet of the lane and we can run our participants down the shoulder, so we'll run cones down there and then we'll just cross the Iron Springs Road. Again, I'll have a team where we get onto it and then a team where we get off it, keeping everybody safe. And then lastly, is the closure of Comstock Road. I did meet with Preston, the road supervisor about two weeks ago. He's, he didn't think there would be a problem with Comstock Road. He couldn't give their approval because it's not a highly traveled road. The reason we want to close that is because we do go down it, turn off it, get back onto it and then turn off it again. And that's basically from Iron Springs going towards the, the Black Iron Mine. And we would close it right at the railroad tracks where it crosses Comstock.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few residents down that road, but I would think that they would be okay with.
Down Comstock?
They can still go out to fifty-six and use that.
Oh, okay.
Use that side.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's where most of them go in anyway.
Quarter of a mile, you said?
That's like two point six miles. So basically from Iron Springs down to where the railroad tracks cross Comstock.
So the people on the west will be able to go out to fifty-six.
Right. Right.
Cause there aren't, are there very many residences?
There's quite a few.
Toward the east?
Most of them are probably this south.
Yeah.
Part of Comstock.
Yeah.
You know, by fifty-six, I would, I would think.
Which is going to be south and west of where you are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Closer down towards the mine?
Yeah, right.
So when I looked across the valley, because I tried and watched the things like that, I didn't see any homes, but I might have missed something.
Yeah, they're back in the trees.
Okay, gotcha. So that's on the, the roads. Any other questions on that part? Okay. Then we provided you a, what's called our emergency action plan. And this is what, we hire an outside contractor to do armor medical. So their job is to, any participant that gets injured, either get them to an access road via their vehicle and coordinate with whoever they talk to at Iron County for the transport. Cause we can't, or their company's not legally allowed to transport. They're just EMTs, but they're not approved transport vehicles. Guess there's some special law.
The ambulance to come and pick them up.
Exactly. And they'll coordinate with them and tell them exactly where to meet them. Exactly, and they'll coordinate with them and tell them exactly where to meet them, make sure that the ambulance can get to the point that they're meeting them, we're not gonna send them in some back country road, we're gonna get them. Shoot Range Road, Iron Springs Road, something that they can easily access. Um, they have the ability to call for a flight, medical flight if needed. Um, they're certified EMTs, so they have that in their back pocket as well, but obviously our goal is to try and. A, not have any injuries, but B, if there is, to get them to the ambulance, I'll let the ambulance, ambulance do the transport. And so that's all kind of broken down on this emergency action plan for you as well.
Is there, is there anything, is there anything on this you want me to highlight, or, you know?
No, it, it's mainly for information, you know, the, um, the BLM has approved the emergency action plan. So just so you guys don't think we're coming in all willy-nilly and not have a plan put together to, to address all the situations.
Okay.
And then, uh, you had this letter pulled up to the communications plan. So what we do is we put a, um, a man up on a mountain and he sits there all day and he runs all the communications, basically like a dispatcher for the sheriff's office. So all calls go into him and then he dispatches the proper personnel out. Pretty simple, we have two channels that we run on, our main channel, and we have a secondary channel in case.
There's other people on it?
Or somebody forgets that they were on their microphone, they lay it down and they sit on it. They have a nice conversation that you get to hear and nobody else can talk out, so we have a backup channel for situations like that. Plus the use of cell phones, most of the area out there has cell phones as well. And then on, on the map, um, that you guys have, there's all these checkpoints out there and all those people have the same radios to communicate back and forth. So there's, there's a very good communication process, if for some reason somebody doesn't check in, we have them call in the morning, check in that they're in location. We'll physically send somebody there to make sure that they're there, so. A, the participants are safe, but most importantly, two, the public's safe, that they're not interacting or being where they're not supposed to be. And then lastly, I just got a nice poster if this gets approved, to help, um, promote Cedar City, Iron County. Um, Maria at the tourism has been very helpful and, and helping us out, so we don't want to disperse these throughout town until we have the approval, so.
Have you, uh, worked with our sheriff's department, our sheriff?
So I just met your sheriff here just a few minutes ago, but I have been working with Lieutenant Mitchell and Deputy Romans on coordinating like VIPs for these closures. Uh, they're planning on having six to seven VIPs slash officers out there to help with the, the traffic control.
Okay.
Maybe, and I do have a, a meeting with them this afternoon pending this approval.
Okay, Sheriff, do you have any input on this, or?
This is really the first I've heard anything about it. I, I think in concept, it can be a great, a great opportunity. I'm always concerned whenever we're crossing public roads. You know, depending on the time of day, you know, we got a lot of traffic that goes out there at times of day for, uh, Waco and. Whatnot, we've got, uh, depending on, on what day it is, can affect how much traffic is going up and down Range Road as well. Um, you know, so I'm always concerned about that, because anytime that we're mixing, uh, motorcycles and UHVs, OHVs and whatnot, that are just coming across the highway. At full speed. Making sure that all the pieces come together to make sure that we know that they're there, that we got good line of vision, that we have. Enough time to be able to stop the traffic and, and make sure that everybody's kept safe there. Uh, you've talked about your emergency operations plan, about EMTs. Uh, what's the medical control that they're operating under? Well, no, so EMTs have to work under what's called medical control, which is under a doctor's supervision. So you can't be an EMT without having medical control. So all of our EMTs for Gold Cross work under the medical control of a doctor at, at Cedar City Hospital. So I'm curious what your medical, medical control is, who is it that's, that's supervising, uh, your EMTs? You know, where are they from? Do you have a doctor on staff, or how's that?
Thank you, uh, thanks for clarifying that, I wasn't quite sure, so we do, we have a medical director, his name is Doc Lippman. Um, he's the head of UMC in Las Vegas, so he's over the medical teams, that's his license they're operating under, I guess is what you're asking.
So, those are really, really my only real concerns about it.
And so, obviously, when you start out, they're all together, but after that, they're separate, so you'll have flaggers and radios and you can warn the flaggers when to stop traffic and all those things then?
Yeah, absolutely, and, and like I, I mentioned, and I showed a little on the diagram, but the participants will be required to slow down at twenty-five miles an hour. Like a hundred yards out from each crossing, so they'll come in at a controlled speed, so they won't be at race speed coming through there, they're just back it down and go through that, and then. Once they clear the road crossing, they get a sign that says resume race speed.
Question, Volney?
Uh, good morning, my name is Volney Moran. Um, pardon, my loss of hearing isn't, uh, helping out, but I just wondered, I didn't hear anything about. Iron County being named as an additional insured for any liability or errors or, or missions or any other, uh, potential. Perhaps hopefully one in a million occurrence that might put Iron County at risk.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir, for the question, so yes, uh, John, can you confirm we've sent you the additional insurer for that?
So we have, we're listed as additional insured and then, uh, we require indemnification as well, so.
Okay, Sam, are you good with that? Thank you, Sheriff.
We. Paul Briggs is here, um, do you have anything to add to that? I would assume that's why you're here. BLM Director.
Well, uh, Commissioners, Mr. Jackson's been in touch with BLM for a considerable amount of time about this, Commissioner Wood, you'll remember, we talked about this earlier in the summer. Um, unfortunately, part of the reason I'm here and part of the reason Mr. Jackson is here, is we had some delays, uh, getting through some of the, the. Landowner permissions and things, we were originally, originally Legacy Racing was looking at a much larger event. Um, and I think probably something you'd still like to do as an annual event, I don't want to put words in your mouth. But, uh, we, we, we initially were working on a special recreation permit for that. Uh, we ran out of time under our requirements, um, for, for us to, to facilitate the road closures and, and have our. Law enforcement or our personnel have any authority in those matters, we have to publish in the federal register notice in advance. Of those type of things to actually implement closures on public lands. So part of the reason Mr. Jackson's here and taking your time and the sheriff's time today is because. Um, I agreed that if Iron County would help with some of that and, and assume some of the, the liability and the, and help with the road closures and the safety aspects. That we would still move forward with permitting the event on BLM lands, so, yeah, a little bit of an exception to the rule, but. That, that's, that's why he's here speaking with you folks today, so.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
Um, so i- it's a smaller event then, is, then, so what's the difference in amount of riders or whatever that way?
Yeah, so we originally anticipated like a hundred and twenty, uh, vehicles participating and right now, we're sitting at forty-five, so that's a lot smaller. Plus the, the area, we were looking at a sixty-two mile course previously and now we're down to thirty-one miles.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
All right, any other questions?
My.
I will say, um, we get people wanting to plan events and things and. Um, these guys are, have been very professional and very prepared on, on every front, everything that we've asked for. Uh, they provided, you clearly tell it's not their first rodeo, so. Which we kind of had that conversation too, so.
Well, where, where this is your first annual, we'll see how it goes and see how he can proceed for next year.
Well, unlike what Paul was saying, is, uh, we had to launch our twenty-two schedule for next year, um, early this year. Uh, so people can start planning, logistically, and this event is planned for next year. And pending the approval here, we're planning on it for next year as well. And using the bigger loop, the sixty-one mile course where they'll have time to do their federal closure and it won't be as big of an issue. But I do want to mention is, even if that does happen, I plan to come back before the Commissioners, because I think this is an important process, so the. Community has a chance to weigh in and give any questions wherever they have, and you guys have the opportunity as well.
Thank you.
You ready for a motion? Uh, I'll move to approve of an off-road race for motorcycles and UTVs. Event that will be held at Iron Springs Resort, event date is November sixth, twenty twenty-one, from six to eight PM, from six AM to two eight PM.
Second, so it's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck, be safe.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Agenda item number four, discussion and possible approval of Peak View subdivision. PHV final plat, thirty-two lots located near twenty-six hundred west Mid Valley Road. North, approximately twenty point eight acres within the description listed on the agenda, Mr. Erickson.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
I do, did not get a pull-up for this one, I didn't get time to give it done. And that's why I'm a little late, because, uh, just too much going on, on a Monday morning, but. You've seen this before, this is a Peak View subdivision, final plat, it's been here for preliminary plat, this is phase five. So should be familiar with it by now, it is right off of Mid Valley Road and, uh, they have. You know, completed four phases previously that all went in on the one road, and now we're moving to the west for the second entrance, which is a relief to the neighbors. And the property owners out there to have a lot of that construction going in on another road, instead of all down the one road. So it's been a good subdivision, they've been good, uh, partners and, um, we have everything in place for this, the final plat is all signed. With the exception of the county, uh, approvals, we do not have still the, the bond amount, letter, uh, of credit. Promise that it would be here by the time we got here today, but this is what often happens, so. Uh, we would want that approved contingent upon the bonding being finished and then I'll hold the plat and not have it recorded until, of course, the bonding is finished, so. Any questions?
This, uh, planning commission was good with this?
No, planning commission doesn't see this.
You don't see this one?
No, the, the final plat, the preliminary calls to the planning commission has a public hearing, comes here, you have a public hearing. All the final plat does is we just ensure that the construction drawings are done, they've been approved by the engineer, the engineer's estimate has been prepared. Uh, it's been approved, all we're waiting for is the bonding, and so it's just that, that due diligence process.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Okay, uh, I'll move for approval of Peak View subdivision, phase five, final plat, thirty-two lots located near twenty-six hundred west, Mid Valley Road. Forty-eight hundred north, approximately, approximately twenty point eight, eight acres. Uh, on contingent of the bond.
Second. So it's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Reed.
Thanks.
Number five, resolution twenty twenty-one ten, appointing a representative and an alternate representative for the annual Utah County's indemnity pool, USIP. Annual meeting to be held November eleventh, two thousand twenty-one.
So this is contin- or the, this is, uh, just the annual meeting that's held, um, we historically have had the, the clerk be the. Representative and HR be the alternate representative, um, that's what's written on this resolution. Um, we can change that if you'd like, um, that's held during the UAC conference.
Okay.
During that Wednesday.
And you're down there anyway.
And I'll, and I will be there, so.
So you will be, you, you will?
So, yeah, so I'm listed as.
John and then Jennifer.
So you will plan on doing, being that representative for us, okay. And that's.
Jennifer be the alternate?
Correct, so if I can't make it, she'll, she'll.
Alright.
Okay, perfect.
Should we do that? Okay, I'll move to pass the resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten, appointing a representative. And an alternate representative for the annual Utah County's indemnity pool, annual meeting to be held November eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, John Whitaker would be the, um, representative and alternate would be Jennifer Bradbury.
Second, so it's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, that's perfect, sorry. I'm good, sorry.
All right, number six, resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven, consideration for adoption of a resolution of the county. Council of Iron County, Utah, authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a master lease agreement by. And between the county and the municipal building authority of Iron County, Utah, the authority authorizing issuance and sale by the authority of its lease. Revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-one, in the aggregate principal amount of not more than five hundred thousand and related matters. Do you want to talk about this, Reed?
I keep looking back at Dan.
Dan?
Keeps refusing to look at me, so I assume.
Not making eye contact?
Means that I will address that. So far. Dan is also here to answer questions, uh, we also have Marcus Keller, who is the, uh, financial advisor from Zion Bank, listening on YouTube. He emailed me just a minute ago and said that he could be glad to answer any questions, uh, if we have, if we have them. You're aware that this resolution is, uh, simply outlining the process for the. Uh, first step in getting the revenue bonds for the Newcastle Fire Station. This is the loan that we got from the, uh, the CIB, uh, was. Up to five hundred thousand dollars, half grant, half loan, this simply, this resolution authorizes. The county to enter into an agreement with the municipal building authority, who is the applicant. And, uh, is accepting the loan from CIB. And this, uh, the next resolution after this one then is the municipal building authority entering into, or approving this resolution, starting the process. For what they call the parameters resolution that defines the scope of what we can bond for, and then we proceed from there. So there's a notice period and then we just kind of start through that process, so this is the first step in doing that. So this resolution authorizes the lease agreement between the county and the municipal building authority, and then the next resolution simply is, as the building authority. Uh, you will reconve- you convene as the building authority and then authorize that parameters resolution.
Very good.
Any questions?
Pretty simple.
Yeah.
I would like to comment on the CIB, I mean, I, I attended that board. And, uh, I visit with Commissioner Bushman, he's from Paiute County, and, uh. I love his idea that we should put a plaque on every building that we receive funds from the CIB, put a plaque that said, this building was made possible by the CIB. And, and Bushman's, Commissioner Bushman's, um, thought was, and I agree with it, there's people out there that want to shut down oil and mining, uh, gas and oil extraction in our country. But if, if you really, um, drill down to the communities everybody lives in, there's projects, there's a lot of projects, sewer lines, fire stations, libraries. That have received funding from the CIB. And, uh, and right now, with the, with the closure of drilling, oil drilling and, and different things that's happened recently. That fund is suffering greatly because they've shut down their revenue stream, I mean, we, Commissioner Wood talked about going to. UNA County and touring that, and they're such an oil-rich and extraction-rich county. It's unbelievable the amount of money they've received and, and over the years for projects. And it's a big deal, and so I think we need to recognize that and make sure that we educate the public that that's, that's important to our counties.
We're sitting in a building that was funded that way, that's remodel.
Well, and to that end, Paul, I would like to say that, um, if you recognize the challenge that we have out in the west desert. There's, there's hardly any tax base, you have, you have farms and you have a few stray homes. And yet they, the county has to by law provide, provide services, including fire. Um, you know, this building out there is, is a drop in the bucket of what's needed. Um, and without being able to go to CDBG and go to CIB, all of that has to come out of the tax base. And there's not hardly a tax base out there, which means that the rest of the county continues to subsidize to build. Fire equipment, fire buildings, fire equipment's very expensive, we, we just barely got, what was it, about seven hundred fifty, eight hundred thousand dollars in requests on. Two fire apparatuses out there, which we have to now figure out and debate, but we'll continue to go to CDBG and try and get money. Which we have to now figure out and debate, but we'll continue to go to CDBG and try and get money, but but without CIB doing some loans, and that's why we're doing this. I just wanted to, that's actually why I stood up. Um, we could cash flow and we could pay for this, but to go to get a half loan, half grant, um, give some kudos to Commissioner Cousins. He went up and, and, and made the argument and, and really fought, got us a interest rate of what, one point five?
One percent.
One percent.
Gone up twice, actually. Gone clear to Salt Lake and straight back.
But there's a lot of work. Without these, without these programs, we really wouldn't have the ability to do what we're doing out there, so. Without raising taxes.
There really is a big, huge need in that valley. We, we're struggling there with our fire.
They qualified for the CDBG funding, the two hundred thousand part of this project, uh, which was seed money and really helped go to CIB, uh, because they're a low-income area. We had to do an income survey out in that area. All of the fire department folks went around door-to-door in their service area and did the survey as part of our application. And so uh, it really showed the need out there for not having the resources. And in rural Utah, CIB is instrumental in making those infrastructure needs possible. So, yeah, I agree.
Back to my comment, I think we ought to really do a plaque on every building we've done.
Yeah, we did actually do one on the public safety building.
Okay.
In Cedar City.
Where is it located? The plaque?
Uh, right on, by the front door when you walk in, right there on the left.
Does it recognize CIB funds on the plaque?
Believe it does. I think it mentions all of the funding sources.
If we use that money.
We did use a loan on that for this building.
For this building to be.
Grant part, but we did get a loan, so it's still low interest. Yeah, for the remodel, so I think that's a good idea.
Well, and that fund is diminishing, diminishing.
It's, yeah, it's.
You know, there's some ideas being floated about, you know, back.
How do we refund that?
Back East, there, they have a program. Commissioner Bushman did a presentation at the CIB meeting I was at and talked about they're eating their seed corn. They're, they're, they, uh, that fund is diminishing and, um, back East, they have, oh, what's the term I'm thinking of? When you, um, give your, some of your estate to, uh.
A lot of people don't have anybody to give their children an endowment.
An endowment, so that they can, and so they'll go to communities and raise money through endowments and get that up to, so they can just kind of live off the interest. And that's something these other states have been successful at and something, and something that Commissioner Bushman is kind of spearheaded.
Yeah, they're looking at doing with that fund.
I, I turned away with all that. And one thing I have heard is that the CIB has been successfully and conservatively, conservatively run for so long that they're actually, I think they actually get more revenues now from bond repayment than they do, uh.
I think so. So the, so the money we're paying off on this building is helping fund that.
Yeah.
That going, so.
But still, at one percent interest, that's lower than what we could get in the market. And so it's still a great benefit. And so, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Entertained a motion?
Uh-huh. Uh, I'll move to pass the resolution twenty-twenty-one-dash-eleven. A resolution of the Iron County Council of Iron County, Utah, author, authoriting and, uh, approve the execution and delivering of a master lease agreement by the by and between the county and the municipal building authority in Iron County, Utah. The authority authorizing an issuance and sale by the authority of its lease revenue bond, series twenty-twenty-one in the aggregate pay, uh, principal amount for not more than, um, five hundred thousand and related matters.
Second. So it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, uh.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. We will now, the chair declares that, uh, we will convene as the municipal building authority of Iron County. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess we can just do another motion.
Same thing, right?
Uh, and, um, Marcus Keller just said, yep, good job. So got it covered.
All right, very good.
Very good.
So this is the NBA resolution twenty-twenty-one-dash-one, consideration for adoption of an NBA resolution authorizing issuance and sale by the municipal building authority of Iron County of not more than five hundred thousand, aggregate principal amount of its lease revenue bonds, series twenty-twenty-one and related matters. So I'll entertain a motion on that.
So can I motion of just what you said?
Yep.
So we don't have to go through that again?
That's just fine. So I'll second that motion and, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We will now reconvene as Iron County Commission and move, okay.
Before you go on to the next items, do you want to sign this plat, uh, as, uh, Chair Pro Tem or do you want?
I can if you'd like.
Since I don't have the bonding anyway, I can just wait for Blake to sign it. That's, that's why I'm asking.
It's up to you. I don't care either way.
Okay.
You want to just get it done or do you want to?
I, I guess I'll wait because I don't, I can't record it anyway and I've got this other one I was gonna have signed, which is the seventy-seven hundred west plat that we did. And I'll just wait until he's back and get him signed.
Sounds good.
We won't record till then anyway.
Okay.
Very good. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so we'll, we'll go ahead and move to non-delegate items, delegated items. Is any prey dog matters we need to discuss?
We want to still have.
Do you have anything on that?
Our prey dogs don't get a lot of love these days, do they?
Thank goodness.
No kidding.
And I just think rural cam boards too.
With that, uh, Chair Pro Tem declares this meeting adjourned. Thank you.